Good evening. It is Monday, December 12th, 2016. It is 7:00 PM. And I call to order the second to the last meeting for the year of 2016 for the Speedway Town Council. I am President of the Council, David Lindsay. I'd like to welcome other members of the Council present with us this evening. To my far right, Counselor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my immediate right, the Vice President of the Council, Jeff Matthews.
Good evening.
To my immediate left, Counselor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
To his immediate left, Counselor Jason Delisle.
Good evening.
And to his left, our Clerk Treasurer, Monty Coens.
Good evening, sir.
Our agenda has been posted, which we will follow this evening. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the November 28th Council Meeting. Those have been distributed. Any corrections or changes to those? Hearing none, those will be accepted as presented. Item three on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the November 8th, 2016 Executive Session. Again, those have been distributed. Any corrections? Hearing none, those are accepted as presented. Item four is approval of the minutes for the December 8th, 2016 Executive Session. Any corrections or changes to those? Hearing none, those are accepted as presented. Item five on our agenda is approval of an agreement with the Speedway Police Department. This is in relation to a contract with our officers. I haven't asked them yet, but Counselor Delisle and Counselor Rakes sat on that committee. If either one of you would like to address that tonight.
You start, and I'll... Well, yeah. So, I guess in discussions with Speedway, the police department, we have taken the contract, I guess formalized a contract with them, and both parties are in agreement. And we have a final draft that's been presented and ready to be approved.
Yeah. I think, just to add to what Jason said, I think the discussions went really well. I think there was some good input that we received from our police officers, things that they were looking for, and things that our budget will support based on the information we received from Monty and our prior town manager. And so, we went back and forth a couple times, but overall, it was a very smooth process, and much appreciation to those police officers.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agreement with the Speedway Police Department.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, to approve the contract agreement with the Speedway Police Department. Any questions, further questions from the Council? Questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with the Speedway Police Department, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. For the public's information, the Fire Department has not been forgotten, but I was out of town last week, and was kind of delayed in getting their contract for them to review. They have that, and Counselor Matthews and I worked on that, and we expect that to be before the Council on the 27th for a vote on that. Item six on our agenda is a public hearing, which we will open at 7:04 PM. This is to approve the designation of an economic area within the town of Speedway for a personal property tax abatement, and this is related to Praxair. If there's anyone from the public at this time that wishes to speak during the public hearing, you are asked to step to the podium at this time. Hearing none, we will then close the public hearing at 7:05 PM. And move forward with item seven. Item seven is a resolution which approves an economic revitalization area within the town of Speedway related to a personal property tax abatement. Again, this is for Praxair within the town. Counselor Rakes, in my absence, met with Praxair last week, and I've asked him if he could address this for us tonight.
Great. Thank you. Actually, Mike Walker from Praxair is here this evening. I asked if he wanted, when we met last week, whether it was Mike or Michael, and he said either one, so tonight, I'm choosing Mike. So, thanks, Mike. But this is a terrific investment. I have a little bit of familiarity with what they're doing. Put a couple plating lines in companies I used to be with in different locations, so it was kind of interesting to hear the investment they're making, which includes about $1,008,000 in equipment and facility improvements and so on, that all relate to the abatement on the personal property tax that we're talking about here. It's a seven-year abatement, which is what the state will allow. It adds jobs to our town, and probably the most important thing is it continues to build on Praxair and a great partnership we've had with them for, really since the beginning of the town, as far as I'm concerned. So, with that, I will actually make a motion that we approve Resolution 2016-14 as presented.
Second. It's been a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2016-14. Any questions from the Council?
No. If Mike wanted to make a couple of comments on it, he'd be welcome to do that.
Sure.
He did come out this evening, so...
I believe this is when I say anyone in our audience wish to make a comment, they may approach now.
So, I'd like to thank the Council for inviting me to this meeting. This is a very important investment for Praxair Surface Technologies. As the Councilman commented, we'll be making about approximately $1.8 million investment. We will be hiring a total of 14 employees to support this new work. This is work for Rolls-Royce. It's for a turbine engine component. It's an electroplating process where we're applying abrasive material to a silfin area in the turbine engine section. So, it's a critical part for Rolls-Royce. It's a great growth platform for Praxair Surface Technologies, and we're happy to be able to make this investment and hire local employees to support the local economy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment or have questions about the resolution this evening? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2016-14, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. And Gary, thank you for that great description.
Pinching for you.
Yes, greatly appreciate it. Next is item eight on our agenda, which is nominations to our 2017 Boards and Commissions. I don't believe we're going to take nominations this evening. This is just information that we have. They've listed Arts Advisory Council, Cable Commission, Housing Advisory Council, Parks Board, Public Transportation Board, Solid Waste, a Redevelopment Commission, and the Speedway Community Development Corporation as having positions that are open. If, for those in town that are interested, we would encourage you to please either go to the town's website, or you can stop by the Town Hall to pick up a form to, you can fill that out, and we will make those nominations on the 27th of this month. As a reminder, our meeting's supposed to be the 26th, but it's been moved to the 27th. Any Council have any other comments? All right. Moving on to item nine on our agenda is report from our department supervisors. We'll begin with Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. I guess I'll start. This obviously is the Christmas season, and, you know, there's a lot of tips available for, you know, people in terms of shopping, securing your home, securing your car. You know, we've seen an uptick in some car break-ins, and the only thing I do is encourage people to, you know, be aware of their surroundings and be aware of the fact that there are people out there that, you know, that do bad things this time of year. But, you know, please look at some of those tips and make sure you've secured your home or your car. I guess the other one is, it's also the holidays. People go to parties. I would say if people want to drink, that's great. I would encourage them to find a way home other than driving. And this is a time of year when, you know, law enforcement spends a lot of time doing DWI checkpoints and, you know, trying to take drunk drivers off the road. You know, my last one is, it's also the end of 2016, and, you know, I guess as much as anything, I want to say thank you to the town of Speedway, the citizens who've supported us, you know, the Council or Commissioners. You know, we're very fortunate in this town to have the kind of partnership that, you know, makes our jobs a lot easier, and, you know, I don't think we say thank you enough to those that help us throughout the year. And, you know, it goes without saying, I think the men and women of the Speedway Police Department do an outstanding job, and I'd like to thank each of them publicly. That's what I have.
Great. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Next is our Fire Chief, Bob Fishburne.
Good evening, Council. Wanted to let you know that we recently completed our Captain's Promotional Process, and Lieutenant Mark Lakes, as of today, our Fire Merit Board certified his appointment. He and Lieutenant Cheshire both went through a pretty rigorous process, and that fills our officers' positions. We'll keep a Captain's List certified for a year as a part of our merit rules. So, really, really a great process. We had really good feedback from the people who evaluated. We have outside chiefs, operations chiefs, that help us evaluate and assess, and we use an outside company to do the written test, and it just really goes pretty seamlessly now that we've done it. So, also want to thank the citizens. This is a time of year when, you know, the police department and the Fire Department get a lot of people that bring things in, stop by with cookies, or they send a box with, you know, Christmas ornaments for us to put on the tree, and both stations get inundated, and I just really appreciate that. As the chief, the community, you know, does things like that to show their appreciation this time of year.
You have a favorite cookie, Bob?
I like them all.
You want to start something?
I like them all. As you can tell, I like them all. One of the other things that I did want to say is Resource Officer Mark Jones with the Police Department contacted the Fire Department here a few weeks ago, and we started a coat drive throughout the whole month of December to help with those kids in the schools that don't have coats. You know, the guidance counselors and the teachers know of them, and Mark has really done a good job connecting with those kids. It's a way for him, if he sees a kid, to do, you know, to say something about it and to help that. It really helps build that relationship, but he was nice enough to ask the Fire Department to come alongside, so we've put a barrel in the hallway, and since there's someone from Praxair here, Dave Howard from Praxair always contacts me each year to see how they can help. Well, they've come on board too, and a lot of their safety people, you know, they have weekly meetings, and so they've, they're bringing over to contribute. Coles has given the school racks to hang them on, and it'll be something that's going to be great. I mean, even if we don't use them this year, they'll be able to use them next year. So, just really wanted to, you know, tell you a little bit about that partnership from the public safety side. So, I don't see you guys. Have a Merry Christmas, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next is our Street Department, Linda Walters.
Good evening, Council. Just a few updates on your Street Department. Just to inform you that the yard waste program for the season has been completed. The truck is available on property if you need to drop off some yard waste material during the season. We will be back in January picking up Christmas trees only, so we'll get that note out to everyone in January. Project updates, the Dry Run diversion project, we did our final walkthrough on it with the punch list item, so that is completed. The engineering, Burke Engineering, will start the paperwork and the numbers on Lomar, we'll get that submitted, so hopefully everything will work good there. The basin is working the way it's been designed, so hopefully it'll prove out and will help those people get that flood insurance. The 15th Street Alley Project, the stormwater project there has been completed. The 2016 paving project has been completed with a few punch items that they have to follow up on. Gilman and Allison Parking is open for business. The 72-inch is in works. We've got a delay on breaking down the bypassing, and we will put out a notice late tomorrow if we're going to be able to get that broke down Wednesday, Thursday. So, we'll keep our one up to date on that construction there on Main Street. So, keep our fingers crossed. Tomorrow, we'll be positive. And just a reminder that it is snow season. We've got an event coming in in the morning. Our trucks will be outrunning about, so everybody, just please slow down, give yourself a little bit more time, and have a safe trip. And I'd like to echo what the other guy's been saying is, thank you. Thank you for your support, citizens, and we do have some cookies at our place if you'd like to stop by and have some.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for, Wendell.
You're welcome. Come on. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendell.
Next is our Water Works Department, and Steve Hurst, who, from all the emails, looks like he's been busy.
Evening, Council. My report is pretty much a rehash from last month. Our surface plant is shut down for the season up until probably April. In the meantime, we're doing maintenance work and inspections on our surface water plant equipment. We've got all the basins drained out, taking a look at that stuff. Groundwater plant's working just fine. Our wells are up and going. Not seeing any problems with that. Out in the distribution, of course, it's that time of year again. We did have a break last week. We just now finished up a break today, so it's probably going to be pretty common up until sometime in January. Speaking of cold weather, we're going to get some pretty icy conditions in the next week or so. So, residents out there that are susceptible or have a history of their service lines freezing up, I would suggest that they keep a trickle of water running out of their tap, or opening cabinets to make sure you've got heat underneath. Just make sure, you know, keep your service line where it comes into the building warm, and that will... That would help eliminate a freeze-up. So, if you do have a freeze-up, contact the water plant. We'll send some guys out there to thaw out the, most likely, it'd be a frozen meter. We'll get that thawed out for you and go from there. So, that pretty much concludes my report for this evening. So, questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Next is our wastewater department, and Norm Berry.
Good evening. Have a few items to catch up on. On the sanitary sewer lining and rehabilitation project, the manholes, everything's been completed now in Farley and in Chapel Hill. All that work is now substantially complete, and now we've, they've started on the second phase in the Farley addition, which will entail lining the remaining sewers. There's not going to be any manhole work in that area. That work started Friday. It's anticipated to be about a 60-day work schedule, weather-dependent. Substantial completion date for that project is set for February the 28th. We continue to see the benefits from the 2016 work in Chapel Hill. The lift station now continues to work much better, and we haven't had any overflow since the project has been completed. So, that's great. Catch up on the pretreatment audit. I reported that we'd had an audit back a couple of months ago. We've received the exit report from IDIM. We currently are incorporating those recommendations and changes that they have requested. One of those is going to require a revision to our sewer use ordinance. It's going to be a minor change, just adding some wording to the penalty section. So, I will be drafting a ordinance revision, a draft revision, and I'll be getting that to you for your review, and I'm hoping that maybe we can get that maybe on the next Council agenda for your consideration. Another thing that we're working on, I met with the grant administrator today, Dave Kizer. We're going to pursue, there's a $550,000 wastewater grant available out there to do work at the wastewater treatment plant. So, I'm working with him now. We're going to try to come with you for a proposal to maybe submit for that grant. That letter of intent has to be submitted by February the 10th, so it's a 10% match. This will aid in replacing some of the outdated equipment at the treatment plant that is included in my five-year capital plan. Shouldn't be any engineering fees associated with this, so outside of the construct, or the replacement of the equipment and everything, it'd just be the grant administration fees. So, I'll get that to you as soon as possible. Other than that, as far as the plant, plant's running fine, not having any major issues. I would like to thank my employees for another year of hard work and dedication, another year of zero violations. So, I thank them very much for their dedication and their hard work. Also, today, or this week, is National Hug Your Wastewater Operator Week, so, and we do not have any cookies, I'm sorry, but if you see one of us, just give us a big hug. That's for you, LeAnn. There she is.
That's just what I was going to say. LeAnn didn't need to bring that up.
I didn't know that.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Norm.
Thanks, Norm.
Thanks, Norm.
And with that, our Parks Programming Director, LeAnn Sewell.
I didn't even have a silly holiday for today, so Norm stole my thunder. I have two quick things tonight, well, maybe three. First of all, the third and fourth grade, it's in my eye, the third and fourth grade basketball league wrapped up this Saturday, so I'd like to publicly thank the high school basketball varsity, the high school boys varsity team, Coach Bennett and his players that worked with the boys league, and then also Coach Wills and the high school varsity girls team, who worked with the little girls. And Single Out, I get to know the girls better than the boys because I'm there for most of their stuff, but to give a special thanks to seniors Hannah Scherfick and Reagan Hubbard, who have worked with the league for the past three years, who will be graduating this year, who will be sorely missed. The other thing is, we have finally, after three years, I've been able to make a contact that we can get our older kids playing interleague play. So, I was actually on the phone, like, pulling into the parking lot, trying to coordinate because we have an opportunity to not only do one game of interleague play per team Saturday, but now two games with the Pike Youth League. So, our kids will be traveling up to Lincoln Middle School on Saturday to play the Pike Youth League, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. So, this will be interesting to see how this goes. I don't know exactly what to expect, and I'm pretty excited that our kids will have the chance to do something a little different and play kids that aren't the same kids over and over. So, the third thing is that the Parks Board meeting for January is, usually, they're on the third Monday of the month. The third Monday of January is a holiday with Martin Luther King Jr. Day, so we moved the January Parks Board meeting to January 10th. That is also to facilitate having the master plan consultants from Proz Consulting come in to present the draft version of the master plan that they will be submitting to IDNR for the draft deadline in January. So, if you are interested in seeing what recommendations they've put together so far in draft form, please join us at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 10th. I'm really excited to see what they've got put together for us. This has been months and months of work, and so it's nice to see it kind of starting to come to some fruition. And, okay, so four things last. As Dave mentioned, we've got two openings on the Parks Board. So, publicly, again, I'd like to thank Tim Ramien and Melissa Delacrobo. Tim has been serving since before some kids could drive cars. Melissa, not quite so long, but they've both been very helpful to the board and hoping that we'll find some worthy replacements for them and get some new blood, I guess. So, unless you guys have any questions, I'm done for the year. Merry Christmas. I feel like Griswold in the Griswold movie. Okay. Bye. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 10 on our agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments from our Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a normal Monday. I have a normal group of claims to present to you for approval from November 25th through December 9th. Appreciate approval. Any questions anybody might have?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the claims as presented by the Clerk Treasurer.
A second.
And a motion, a second, to approve the claims as presented by our Clerk Treasurer. Any questions from the Council?
Monty, I do have a quick question. I see a few individuals on here for the Speedway Trails. Do we know where we're at on that process?
The BNO Trail?
Yeah.
Yes, obviously, there's quite a number of people here. I think there's up to 50 that are going to be paid, a certain part of the ground that they own for the BNO, and all of them I've received so far. I think I'm going to get 10 more, if I understand from our construction point. We've paid them, and we're filing the deeds for the transfer of the property.
And then that will be done, then?
That part will be done, yes.
Okay.
It's not done. There's a couple.
There's two.
Yeah, there's two that we're going to have to, what's the term, Wendell?
Indemn.
Yeah. We'll have to follow through on those because they've not, two have not responded, correct?
Yep.
Oh, that's the first I've heard about that, so...
We have one that has not responded. There's a couple other agency that are involved in that property. The one property, we've been in communication and didn't receive their paperwork back, and we gave them an extension on it, so we gave the okay to go ahead and start the process. And on one other property, it's a quitclaim deed. It went through attorneys today. They're doing some changes, and we should get that one cleared up here by end of week.
They told me all the good ones to pay. I didn't know about those. Sorry.
That's all right.
Or the responsible people. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the claims as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Monty?
Yes, sir. The utility adjustments for the same period of time, a little larger amount, but if you look closely, you'll see two major, major leaks that occurred, particularly one you'll know is the Hardee's over on 25th Street, had quite a leak, and adjustment was made, which, that and one other residence basically made up about 75% of the adjustments for this period. So, again, would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the adjustments presented to us by Clerk Treasurer.
A second. It's been a motion, a second, to approve the utility adjustments as presented. Any questions from the Council? I thought, forgot last time. Questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the utility adjustments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five to zero. Anything else, Monty?
Just a Merry Christmas to everyone, and Happy Holiday, and be safe.
Thank you. Next is a report from our Council members. Counselor Eileen Fisher.
Yeah, I'd just like to extend the same. Happy Holidays to everyone. Hope all of our employees and everyone's safe. It's sort of nice to hear the different ones come up and say how members of our town, or individuals of our town drop things by for you guys, so it shows that they respect you as well, too. So, thank you.
Counselor Jason Delisle.
Oh, out of order tonight, huh?
Yeah, I always like to throw things around a little bit.
No, nothing much for me. Just hope everybody has a Merry, Safe Christmas.
Counselor Gary Rakes.
Two things. I saw that Chris Jones is here. Chris is... Chris is a resident, lives on 15th Street, if I remember right, who's been asked to be a part of the parking committee. It's related to the Willshaw, actually, it's related to Main Street in general and parking in general. I wanted to report that there's a formation of this parking committee ongoing. I wouldn't say that naming folks to the committee and then having a meeting is, that it's formed. We're trying to gather information, and I think that's ongoing. So there's two businesses represented that have probably a higher number of employees on the west side of Main Street that are involved. There's two members of the SRC, one of which lives in the district. There's two council members, myself and Jeff. I live in the district, and then Chris, as a resident living on 15th Street, and then various consultants and other folks that are helping with that. So gathering information, and I think we're looking forward to seeing what we can do to help ease some concerns, and probably most importantly, just make sure that we have what we need to go forward with the project that's been named, as well as other things going forward. And then I too wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and just remind everybody that a lot of folks have plenty of people to celebrate the holidays with, but not everybody does. So if you have a neighbor that is an individual, doesn't have a spouse, or maybe their spouse has passed on, or they're just, they're just in a place where they don't have anybody, you might consider reaching out to them. As for me, I've always had family close by during the holidays, but I know people that don't, and I would just encourage everyone to try and do that.
Next is Vice President or Counselor Jeff Matthews.
Wendell is expecting some nasty weather. I still think it's going to be 80 and sunny tomorrow, but take Wendell's advice and keep on a lookout, look out after your neighbors more so than normal. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everyone, and thank you to all of our employees here in town. Couldn't do it without you guys, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Final is a report from myself. I'd also like to thank the department supervisors. I know they love spending their second Monday of the month with us. Thank you for the work that you do, and to your employees for making the town the great place it is to live and work and everything else. Reminder, our next council meeting will be on Tuesday, the 27th. That's been moved due to the holidays, and I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we will see everyone the 27th. That concludes our meeting at 7:32.